Looks like we're all here. Are we ready to start?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Are we recording?
We are recording.
Okay, thank you. I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Zarzaki, can you please call Rome?
Ms. Chick?
President, Northfield Township, Michigan.
Mr. Kuzno?
President, Northfield Township, Michigan.
Mr. Dreyer?
President, Northfield Township, Michigan.
Mr. Quinto?
President, Northfield Township.
Ms. Infante?
President, Northfield Township.
Mr. Roman?
Here in Northfield Township.
And Zarzaki, President of Northfield Township. Everyone's present.
Thank you. I make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Sure.
Supported by Mr. Zarzaki. Any questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, keep by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None opposed. Ms. Conneke, I'll let you take care of the call to the public, please.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, we'll have a call to the public for items on the agenda. If you'd wish to comment at this time, please use the raise hand function, or if you've dialed in on your phone, star six, and wait to be acknowledged. If you wish to speak, please first state your name and address before offering your comments. Is there anyone wishing to give full a comment at this time? Please raise your hand. All right, Chair, it looks like we have no one wishing to make comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. And so there will be no clarifications from commissioners in that case. I don't believe there's any correspondence. No public hearings tonight, so we'll go to item eight, which is reports to committees or to trustees. Ms. Chick?
The board trustees met on December 8th. The board approved two rezoning requests for Whitmore Lake Public Schools to accommodate billboards. The board appointed board representatives to township committees. Nate Moko was appointed to the ZBA. Janet Chick to the planning commission. Jackie Otto to Parks and Rec. Lenora Zelenek to the land preservation committee. There were other appointments for other committees, but there was a lot, too many to mention. There are also openings on other committees if anybody's interested. The deadline for an appointment on the planning commission, ZBA, Board of Review, and the DDA is January 4th. You must be a business owner in the district for the DDA. And I believe the land preservation committee is still taking applications. The board also approved opening the township offices with staggered staff hours. There will be a limit on the number of people allowed in the lobby area at one time. The board approved moving ahead with the mitigation of a small amount of ground pollutants at 75 Barker. And there was discussion on considering some kind of reimbursement for committee, commission, or board members that go over their data limits due to Zoom meetings or data downloads. The discussion will continue to determine how that would be managed. Suggestions in the meantime were to use the hotspots available at the public safety building, the fire station too, or the library. That's all I have.
Thank you. ZBA report, Mr. Kuzno?
ZBA has not met since our last meeting.
Thank you. Anything from staff, Ms. Bird?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Planning consultant report, Ms. Conneke?
Thanks, Chair. Just a couple of quick updates. The Parks and Rec plan will be ready for draft any day now. I believe my colleague Natalie Bond included an update in the last township board packet to that effect, and the adoption schedule that we're looking at there for early 2021. And we're also wrapping up our first draft of all the development packet material updates.
Thank you. Parks and Rec's report, Mr. Aquinto?
Thank you, sir. Nothing new to report. We do have a meeting tomorrow evening via Zoom here at seven o'clock. So it is open to the public and I welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Downtown planning group, Ms. Infante?
Yes, so the DDA met on Wednesday, the 18th, and today. Both meetings have conflicted with PC. So I've spoken with a couple of folks, and from the meetings, the major agenda items remain the same. Becoming qualified for the redevelopment-ready communities, grants, and other resources that we can apply for if we qualify. Ken Dignan is very interested, has completed all paperwork and coursework, and is looking forward to bringing it to the board and getting the board interested and behind this initiative. And the other major issue continues to be streamlining the application process for new businesses, and some confusion over the PC's role in it, because it seems that it is largely an administrative issue, but they still feel the PC somehow should be involved. So there's a lot of confusion around that and a lot of interest in getting it going. But that's really it for last and today's meetings.
Thank you. Is it typically always? I think it's once a month that you're typically on the same night as a planning commission meeting. Is it?
It's all because of the holiday schedule that the DDA had to move their meetings.
Okay, very good.
Usually on, they should not conflict for the rest of the year.
Okay, and I'm sorry, what was the item regarding the planning commission that there was confusion?
It's the same process of trying to put together a streamlined application, set of materials for people interested in opening new businesses, and a lot of confusion about whether or not the PC should be involved, if it should be all in-house. And the DDA would really like to work with us, but there's, again, a real lot of frustration, actually. So that is probably something I should share.
Okay, I'm glad you did, because tonight's the night to talk about it. I'm sure Ms. Conneke can add some dialogue to that. So, Ms. Chick?
I just add to the redevelopment-ready program. That actually came to us about a year or so ago, and we started looking into it, and it has come up again with this board. So we'll see how the interest goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll go to new business, which is, excuse me, there's no unfinished business, item nine. Going on to new business, item 10. Review of the 2020 annual report and work program. Ms. Conneke?
Thank you, Chair. So as many of you probably know, at the end of the year, the planning commission is legally obligated to transmit a report of its annual activities to the governing body of the township. So we have prepared that annual report. And what we like to do is also look ahead to the new year and planning initiatives that we have heard the township board talk about, township supervisors, staff, and the planning commission. So I'll breeze through the content of the annual report, and then we can get into the work plan. So the planning commission met a total of 18 times in 2020. It had a bit of a slow spring, but things really picked up in August. You well know with the many marijuana cases that we had come through here. I've also listed all of you as the planning commissioners as required by the report. So the planning commission processed eight site plans this year, many of them tied to conditional use permits for marijuana uses. There were, I believe, eight marijuana cases. I'm counting them up right now, that were forwarded to the township board for their consideration. The township board, as you know, actually grants the permits, and then those came back for site plan approval to the planning commission. There were a couple of other conditional use permits that was part of the process of the year. There were two rezonings. Those were very recent. I'm sure we all remember them, for the Whitmore Lake Public Schools properties. Rezoning from SR1 to LC for the Jennings Road property, and SR, sorry, SR2 to LC for 168 Jennings, and SR1 to LC for 8877 Main Street. Finally, the planning commission considered one ordinance amendment this year in August. That was a request from a petitioner or from an applicant for an amendment that was tabled for 180 days that applicant. That's listed here for you as well. The planning commission also reviewed a diagnostic of the zoning ordinance. This is where we go through, and we look at all of the different things that could be updated to bring your zoning ordinance more into kind of compliance with how the current operations are, to streamline it, to remove any contradictory or confusing language, and all of that kind of stuff. So that was reviewed at the June 3rd, 2020, planning commission meeting. And at that time, the planning commission made a motion to assemble a three-person study committee to start looking at the actual zoning ordinance changes that McKenna has drafted. This committee hasn't convened yet. I know we talked about it briefly at a prior meeting about reconvening that perhaps in the new year, as the planning commission wishes to review the zoning ordinance draft amendments. All right, so are there any questions, clarifications, or changes to the annual report before I move on to the work program items?
I didn't see any.
Okay. So the proposed 2020-
Looks like we don't know. I don't see any other commissioners with that issue.
Okay. Right, so the proposed 2020 work plan is really about what this body, as well as your planning and building department staff, is going to be taking on in the new year. We had a pretty in-depth conversation with the new township supervisor to set much of this agenda. But for clarification's sake, we've divided this out into the efforts that he would like to see the planning and building department undertake, or that we've heard from the township board and planning commission in the past wish the staff would undertake, and what the planning commission's role in that will be. So the planning commission work plan is much shorter, as you'll see. It's reviewing those draft zoning ordinance changes, and then supporting and advising as needed on staff items. So we feel it's valuable to get planning commission input. We want you to be aware of what the directives are for the staff during the next year. However, if you don't wish to give a recommendation on those work plan items, you know, I think you can feel free to defer approval of work plan items to the township board in your motion to forward them. So you have that option, just so you know, as we walk through these. I think that's also just a good practice, as, you know, the township board is the body that should be reviewing and ultimately approving budget items. So first up, under the planning commission work plan is the zoning ordinance updates. So there's a couple of different ways that you can handle or review. McKenna has substantially drafted an update of many sections of the zoning ordinance. It's basically everything except your administrative procedures, like site plan review, conditional use, you know, all of the things that tie in with the development packet, basically. So the zoning ordinance subcommittee can be that body that's working through that. We can go through chunk by chunk with the committee, and then bring it to planning commission. We can go back and forth between committee, and things come to planning commission in stages. You are going to set the terms for how we move through that. But we think getting those drafts in front of the planning commission and starting the process of updating your zoning ordinance is a big lift, and one that we should have time to complete in 2021. So moving on to the recommended planning and building department work plan. I mentioned the draft zoning ordinance. Item number two here, though, is the code enforcement section of the zoning ordinance. Now, draft previously, I think, came to planning commission and was ultimately tabled for further discussion. We have heard from the township supervisor that this is a pretty high priority item to get squared away sooner rather than later in 2021. So I think we're interested in comments that you might have about how that should proceed. Should we bring that as a discussion item first? And then set a public hearing? Do you feel comfortable with the draft that you saw previously, and want to just go straight? That's kind of the feedback we're looking for. Just to refresh your memory there, it's about the duties and powers of the zoning administrator, and how they work with the code enforcement officer to deal with violations of the zoning ordinance. Next, the next two items are things that are already underway. The redevelopment packet and the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Next up is an updated DDA plan. Ms. Infante, I think maybe this is something that you could help us fill out in terms of our recommendations. But I think drawing out these issues that the DDA is running into, and then getting some real targeted outreach to your business owners, and what the DDA can be doing to support them in building a DDA plan around that will give a clear agenda to the DDA's work plan, you know, how they're spending funds that are available for that. Maybe it's improving that, you know, new business welcome package, or whatever that looks like, to get people up and running more quickly. That can certainly be part of it. The redevelopment-ready community certification. Trustee Chick spoke to this a little bit as being introduced at the last board meeting. And that's something that staff will be supporting as it moves forward, as we did. And then the last, the next two are very site-specific plans. They have to do with opportunity sites that the township has been interested in in some time, and where is North Village, and what is known as the Woodbridge Site. It's on the west side of US 23, close to the North Village site area. And kind of exploring opportunities for those sites to develop can take a lot of different shapes, I think, over the next year, but it could be something to keep the ball moving forward on. And then finally, kind of going along with the code enforcement ordinance is looking at condemnation and demolition. That's kind of the other side, the non-zoning-related side of code enforcement, is how can the township deal with dangerous buildings? And things like that have been identified as being threats to public health and safety. So with that, I would love to hear any comments or questions on the work plan.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Conneke. Perhaps if we take it one section at a time, and then we can address whatever any commissioner has on each item would probably be easiest, I would think. So if anyone agrees to that, some head nods, okay. So I don't have anything. Well, the first paragraph, it is, there's a typo. It's 2021 begins. Ms. Conneke, it's the first item. You skip the correct the years for 2021, correct?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Chair.
So obviously, just so everyone's on the same page, the planning commission work plan is just the two items. As we went over, the rest of them are recommendations for the planning building department work plan, which we may play a role in. I don't know if, Ms. Conneke, if you want to hear a lot of comment tonight regarding one through nine on those. I'm sure some of us do have comment, or I guess tonight would be a good night to throw out the comments, I guess, if we have any, and we can go from there and see if we have to have a second draft or not. I'm not sure. But so, so starting off with planning commission work plan number one. I had no issue with, I'll just start with my comments, and then I'll look for the other commissioners. But I had no issue with it. I know that we did do, you know, the last sentence in number one was about the code enforcement text amendment in 2018. And actually, I had to go back and look at that, because I couldn't remember it. But after seeing it, as I recall, what took place was that the administration forward that text change to the planning commission so that they could have a more efficient code enforcement, if I'm not mistaken. So we did look at that. We tabled it. For what all, I'm not exactly sure. But after I did look at the items that were listed in November of 2018, and I really had no issue with it, if it fits what the administration was doing. But unfortunately, I'd like to have, I think it would be a good idea to have the rest of the commissioners receive that document again, just to review it to make sure. But I really had no issues with those issues that came up in 2018. Is there any other commissioners that have commented on number one? Mr. Aquinto?
I would definitely like an opportunity to review it before it goes to a public hearing as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Oh, Mr. Kuzno?
Yeah, I don't know if this is the proper place. Are we taking any recommendations for zoning changes or additions to the zoning ordinance at this time or not?
I think tonight, we're not per se, but of course, we can always entertain those types of suggestions as the subcommittee brings the items to the planning commission for discussion. Am I correct, Ms. Conneke?
Absolutely. There will certainly be a time to really pick apart the zoning ordinance, both the changes that we've made, and maybe changes that you would like to see that haven't been made yet. But I think the best thing to do is get that study committee meeting, and let's get the process rolling and drafts distributed to the planning commission.
Well, since this is probably my last planning commission meeting, I would like to at least throw out there one thing that I've suggested before, and I think there was some positive response to it, was accessory dwelling units, especially given this year of a lot of death and dying amongst older people and families and stuff like that. I think would be very helpful and beneficial to our society, to our community, to allow for accessory dwelling units, especially in the five-acre zoning that we have, very large lots. I, for one, this is a selfishly motivated thing, but it's also, I think, good for a lot of people, because I have an elderly father, 93 years old, still living on his own, and I'd like to have something that can make him live nearby and on our property. I've got a brother in a situation like that as well. So I mean, I think it's a wonderful thing, and kind of the whole senior housing situation was very poorly handled this year, and I'd like to see some flexibility in our township to allow that kind of thing.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzno. And I remember the comment, and I did agree with you. I had some folks approach me with the same issue, but it will not be forgotten if it comes up for discussion, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else on number one? How about item number two? No? Looks like we have our year planned out. That was a good one. Okay, so now we're going to the recommendations for the planning building department work plan. Keep in mind, these are obviously topics that are, as Ms. Conneke said, that were brought up through possible prior board discussions or conversations with the township manager, township supervisor, not necessarily involving the planning commission. So we'll jump into each one, I think, and just go through it and see if there's any commissioner comments that Ms. Conneke could use to support the document. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment, remind the planning commission that the planning commission and the board of trustees both passed by a motion that the board will direct the planning commission which jobs they want to undertake. So I would probably have to have board approval first before we undertake any of these.
Right, and that's a good point. And I don't know if Ms. Conneke's aware of that. I'm sure she is, to an extent. That's one thing that we don't want to delve deep in any issue that, obviously, there's not a motion and a majority vote by the board to develop. So we want to avoid that. And we also don't, we want to look at this list pretty closely, because we don't want to duplicate work either that's already possibly been done or being done by another group. So Ms. Chick, you had another hand raised? No? Anyone else? Okay, so we'll go to item one. Anyone have issue with item one? We're working on that. Number two, the code enforcement ordinance amendment. I think just receiving and going over it again will help, Ms. Conneke, so however we can do that. Anyone have a comment on that? Number three? It's obviously in the works, and that'll be beneficial. I think that's going to be one of the items that Ms. Infante can take to the DDA. I think that's going to possibly clarify some of the questions, if I'm not mistaken. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, and actually, that was my comment. I think if you relay back to the DDA, that the planning commission will be involved, but they're not involved at this time, because the administrative part of it has to be done first. So it's not that we're not wanting to do it, or it's not our job, but we won't get it until we get something back from administration.
Thank you. Anyone else have something on that? Ms. Infante, anything?
It's a tough one for me, just because I do feel sort of Groundhog Day about this. I've seen this so many times, and I share the frustration of the DDA. So the more we can clarify communications, which is really probably what it's about, the better. I know Mary Bird has done a lot of work on this, too. So it's getting people in communication with one another, because I believe this is quite farther along than anybody realizes. So absolutely.
Thank you. I think it's just a matter of getting it done at this point. We'll go to item four, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. I did have a question. Whoever can answer. Does this include the North Village Park on this portion of the Parks and Recs master plan update?
I can provide some clarification between item four and item eight. So a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, they have similar names, but a Parks and Recreation Master Plan is more like a community master plan. It's the big-picture vision for how recreational assets within the township can be managed over time. You know, what's that future vision for everything? Versus when you're talking about a site master plan, so a park master plan, that would be actually, you know, pencil to paper. Not many people do that, pencil to paper anymore, but putting the design down, getting construction documentation set, you know, your concept and your CDs can line you up for the grant funding to actually move through to construction and realize the community's vision for the site physically. So that's the first step, and then implementing all the hard work that's been done, visioning for that North Village site, or actually say a potential next step.
Thank you, Ms. Chick?
So I'm kind of repeating what you're saying. Basically, Parks and Recreation Master Plan involves every area that the Parks and Rec has authority over, including the dog park, the community garden, everything else, and all of the parks in the township, and anything else that comes across our plate related to that committee. The other thing is, we have a North Village master plan. You're talking about the Parks portion of the master plan for North Village, correct? Okay, not the whole site?
No, the site of it that's dedicated for park.
Okay.
Designing that with, likely that is a landscape park attached that the city would hire to lead that process. Or the township.
Okay, anyone else on that? We'll go to item five. I guess my question, initially reading this, Ms. Conneke, it's very similar to the work that was done on the Downtown Strategic Action Plan in 2017. And I'm hoping that you got to review that. It is part of the master plan. But I know when you just gave us summary, it's maybe not quite like what I'm thinking or reading. Am I correct?
Yeah, I think that would be, I think it's important to maybe pull those things apart. So the Strategic Action Plan. Typically, what a DDA plan will do, it's a development plan. It's looking at how funds raised by the DDA will be spent to meet the DDA's long-term strategic goals. So, you know, if you have a lot of those implementation items in your strategic plan, you can pull them forward. you know, if you have a lot of those implementation items in your strategic plan, you can pull them forward. You know, I think that you could do that, or you could start, you know, fresh. And each DDA kind of chooses to do that differently, depending on their needs.
Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I just, I'm kind of hoping that you're not talking about rewriting the Downtown Strategic Action Plan. It's only three years old, and it costs us a lot of money. So the board might have a little problem with that. I get tweaking it or like doing an update and having the DDA involved in actually speaking to how they're going to help implement the Downtown Strategic Action Plan as opposed to rewriting a new plan. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. I now that I'm rereading it back, this is an implementation plan, and it's not reading like that in the letter. So let's I understand what you're saying. I see all the recommendations in the Strategic Action Plan. This is implementation focused. So I will revise this section to clarify that that's the intent, if this is something that we want to leave on the list.
Great. I think that'd help a lot because that was my, I had the same concerns as Ms. Chick, and it appeared that it's already in process because, you know, that the intention of the plan being completed in April, and I don't know if that's been started yet or not, but I think if if you could revise that to reflect more of what you just described, it'd be helpful. Anyone else on five?
If I could just say, absolutely, that would help a lot.
Okay, very good. And I hope that the DDA has copied, you know, you can at your next meeting, Ms. Infante, you know, refer them to the Strategic, Downtown Strategic Action Plan too, so.
Well, you know, they've brought exactly this issue up several times, wondering why there hasn't been movement because it really was a very robust effort, extremely expensive, huge amount of labor and participation from the community. So they really, they don't have the money. I mean, that's part of the issue. So this would be sort of sore point the way it's written, but the way you just described it, wonderful. It sounds like getting momentum behind it.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? We'll go to number six, is the redevelopment ready communities certification. And Ms. Chick, just to verify, you said that you're still in the process, the board's still in the process of discussing this one, or did they execute a motion and have a majority vote on this yet?
We haven't voted on it. The, it actually came from Supervisor Chalkley and the manager a year or two ago at least, and we took a look at it initially. It's very involved, extremely comprehensive. I don't know if the DDA's actually looked at the plan, but it's pages and pages of long, a lot of investigation and time has to go into it, plus, you know, implementing some of the things that they're asking for in order to qualify to even belong to this program. But it hasn't been voted on. The board still has questions. It's a new board, so they're going to have more questions. I see that it's a great idea. I don't think it's going to happen tomorrow. It's going to be a long process because we actually have to complete many of the qualifications within that packet. So, yeah, it's not final.
So it's still in the process. And, you know, just for the record, I asked that because as we've already been trying to inch our way towards the completion or towards the goals of this plan. And not that I'm opposed of this redevelopment ready communities, not in any way. I think it's a great way to organize the township to function better and also qualify, you know, to meet the requirements. So you know, I know for sure we're going to probably talk about more of this in the future as soon as the board addresses it. So anyone else have questions, comments on number six? Okay, seeing none. Oh, I did have a concern on the writing of this one, Ms. Conneke, and it's the the last sentence. It says the Planning Building Department will ensure updates to the zoning ordinance are aligned with the RRC best practices. And perhaps we can make that more clear. The draft zoning ordinance is already completed, other than the administrative part, as we stated in number one. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh. Many of the zoning ordinances that McKenna drafts, we have a lot of these RRC best practices in mind. That said, as we work with the planning commission to finalize the drafts, that will be something that I think we need to take an even closer look at, knowing that the township is interested in pursuing the certification. There are a number of criteria for RRC designation that are explicitly related to your zoning ordinance, as well as your development procedures.
Great. So you kind of touched on my next question. I was going to ask if the current draft is aligned as such, so. So that we know that going in, I'm not sure if it is or not, you know. We did receive a copy of it at one time, but whether or not it's aligned for this program, I'm not certain, but obviously, before the subcommittee meets, we would like it to be that way. And so for my purposes, I think in the last sentence, if you could delete zoning ordinance and, so the last sentence would read, the Planning Building Department will support this effort throughout next year, particularly in ensuring that updates to the development packet and procedures are aligned with the RRC best practices. I think that would clear it up. Because they're not responsible for the zoning ordinance we are, and I believe that would probably be more accurate to what we're trying to say. Everyone agree with that? Anyone else have comment on number six? I see none. Okay, so number seven is the redevelopment potential of the Woodbridge site. And this, obviously, it's a good item to have in there. It seems to be an administrative direction. Not an issue with that. What I saw, though, I do have comments regarding the second paragraph, which gets into a subarea plan, and I'm not sure I want to go in there right now. But do any other commissioners have comment with like the first half, the first paragraph of seven? Mr. Dwyer?
Where are we talking about? I can't visualize where this is. I can't find a reference in the master plan. I really don't know what we're talking about.
It took me a really long time as well. Let me see if I can pull up an address.
I'm sorry. Basically, Mr. Dwyer, it's the old where the factory was on, it would be Eight Mile on the west side of US 23. Correct, Mr. Iquinto?
Near the new park and ride lot?
Yes.
The open space where there's currently just a contractor's material and machine in there.
And a big water tower, yeah, lots of rubble.
That is correct, 100%.
Okay, so yeah, so for anybody that doesn't know where the Woodbridge site is, that's where it is. Ms. Chick?
I do have a question. Earl LaFave, who was the owner, did pass. Is it still owned by the family, or did it change owners?
I believe we are still trying to track down that information. So that's why this one is a little bit open-ended. You know, we've been directed that the the first course of action for the township should likely be to contact the property owner and see what they are interested in doing with it. However, there could be an opportunity for the township to pursue something like a subarea plan. So we've provided both potential avenues as ways that this could move forward. I don't think we're making a very strong recommendation here about what the exact way that we're going to keep the ball moving on this potential opportunity site.
Yeah, because he did have a whole concept plan at one time, drawings and everything of what he wanted done there, but it never came to fruition. He was kind of hoping that the rail would connect over there, and it doesn't look like it's going to. So, oh, Sam might know, yeah.
So according to a app called LandGrid, Mr. LaFave's company is still the registered owner through the township. And that is correct. His original intention was that the railway would go through that location and have a stop, which would help create the desire for the other businesses to want to be part of the development. So, I mean, it would be very easy to reach out to his company. It was he and his brother's company. So I'm sure his brother is still the, one of the primary owners of the company, of Earl LaFave Development, of LaFave Development, rather.
Thank you, Ms. Chick.
Yeah, so just people, the community was actually talking about what they'd like to see over there, and people were talking about, and I think it's zoned actually for like a hotel or a conference center or something like that. So it is zoned for something already.
I just remember the plans. I actually knew him quite a while, because my daughter went with, to school with his kids. He had a whole mixed-use facility with grocery store and apartments, gyms, cafe. It was quite elaborate. And a variety of factors sort of collapsed that plan. Some were personal, some were economic. It's partly why we see across the street what happened to that shopping center, because they anticipated that was coming in, and so.
Thank you. So as far as, and again, Ms. Conneke, I'm going to preface what I'm going to suggest, I guess I'll go through my comments. I'm going to throw my comments out there about the second paragraph being the subarea plan. And perhaps the other commissioners can speak about it also, but the proposed subarea is already addressed in the Downtown Strategic Action Plan of 2017. It actually, right now, it's zone GC, general commercial. In the future land use map, it's zoned VC, mixed use, with Village Center, mixed use. So if you do look at the specifics of the Downtown Strategic Action Plan as far as design and buildings and so forth, it's already, it already is kind of there. It's not like we're reinventing the wheel. And it's only been a couple of years since we did this master plan, which incorporated the downtown plan, that being part of that. My problem, my question, or something to discuss, would be, when you propose a specific subarea plan, it basically limits possibilities for the development of the property and doesn't consider economic factors that could be presented in the future. So in other words, we all may have grandiose ideas of what should be there, but in all reality, when time comes, what we wish to have there may not be feasible for development. So I like to keep things as open for possibilities as we can. So that's one reason that I'm a little hesitant of the subarea plan. Concerns like, as mentioned in the first paragraph, like a pathway or any types of that thing can be addressed for a future development, no matter what it is. And actually, it still is in our downtown strategic plan. It's addressed in the connectivity framework. It's on page forty-three of that document. It basically shows that, you know, some sort of pathway, you know, leading to that property, if that's the huge concern. But I think that could be easily worked out with, in the future, you know, with whatever's developed there. The vision of this is also addressed in the downtown plan. Like I said, the building and the design guidelines, and that starts on page thirty-one of that document. It's pretty much laying it out as you want to see the downtown district designed. So I really don't feel, at this time, maybe in the near future, but I don't feel a master plan amendment is warranted, really, at this time. It was just adopted, the plan was just adopted in 2019, and these concerns are in that Downtown Strategic Action Plan that I mentioned. And it's part of the master plan. So any any future change in zoning would be towards our goal, what's on the future land use map. So I don't see it as a huge concern, and I just don't want to restrict the development with, you know, have all kinds of strings attached before they even can do anything. So that's my point of view. I'd like to hear from the other commissioners, though. Anyone? Ms. Chick?
I agree with everything you said.
Okay. Anyone else?
Support.
Okay, thanks.
I concur.
Mr. Zerza?
I also concur. We don't really need that second paragraph.
So not to, not to say we would never look at it as a subarea, Ms. Conneke, but if we could convey that the best way you see fit and possibly adjust the second paragraph or eliminate it, I think it might help.
Absolutely. So this one's on me. Mr. Tigden and I are both new, and I think that we got, talking along this path, and both hadn't really dug that far into the Downtown Strategic Action Plan, to see that many of the things that we began talking about is, you know, having a public vision for the site, having a future, you know, set out, and then working with the property owner to see how we can bring those two things together. That's the goal here. So I think we can lose the second paragraph. We'll tool the first paragraph to say, you know, where possible, we would encourage development on the site to be aligned with the Downtown Strategic Action Plan. I think that's a good way forward.
Very good. I agree with that. And, you know, that's good that we talk about these things, especially, you know, you're new to the township. Mr. Tigden, although he's been involved in a lot of items, may not see all the details, but it's not like we're putting the axe to it. But it's something possibly just a little premature, but it's still an option, and it's all, it's all good to talk about. It's all good to have those kind of ideas conveyed. So I think that would work on your suggestion for that. Anyone else on that? Seeing none, we'll go to number eight, which is the, now we're going to get to the North Village Master Plan, which is where we're trying, I was trying to, and I followed kind of followed what you described, Ms. Conneke, about number four being not site-specific, but that's where we're at with number eight, correct? Being site-specific to the North Village Plan?
Yes, site-specific and moving towards an actual physical construction of park improvements.
Okay.
Both in landscape, structure, programming.
Okay, so I do have a question on that because there was, this was visited on the North Village Plan, which is also part, that was one of the other documents, along with the Downtown Strategic Action Plan, that was folded into the master plan. So as far as that document goes, I think it's addressing, we've put the big effort into that already. So, but, you know, I don't want to say that we don't need a more specific plan, but to start anew with something that we just did, I think that was in 2017 also, three years ago. So possibly, if that document can be referred to and the content of it applied in this case, maybe you could help us with a recommendation on that.
Absolutely. So when you move into a next stage from planning on to construction documentation, even if you have a concept plan in place, there's another step there that's still pretty conceptual, preliminary, and then you move on from there. So I think what we want to do is just revise this to make sure that we're pulling forward from the good work that's been done before, and really saying, this is about next steps. This is about not redoing what has already been done. This is about getting you to shovels in the ground and setting you up for grants and things that can fund that.
Right. Not that I'm opposed to it, don't get me wrong, but there was even cost breakdowns and costs about, you know, options that were in that document that was quite a bit of time and effort went into. So yeah, if we can readjust how how this one would be presented, I think it would be helpful to the to not only us, but if we're going to forward this to the board of trustees, so we don't want to make it, we want to make it clear as we want to make it clear as clear as can be as to what we're advising or talking about here. Mr. Cusino?
Can we get an update of what the situation is with North Village these days? I'm not exactly clear. Has that transaction happened between the township and was it Livonia Builders? And where do they, how do they play into this whole thing, too?
Good question, Mr. Cusino. We'll go to Ms. Chick.
Currently, everything is kind of stagnant. We actually, the board at our last meeting asked to get an update because negotiations pretty much have stopped. We do know that they're still interested. We do know that they have a purchase agreement on the table, that the attorney is supposed to be working with them to negotiate, and that's out there, but so far, nothing's happened. COVID came along and people stopped meeting and talking, so we are asking for an update at our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have comment or question on number eight?
Well, I can just say that at the DDA level and in terms of the correspondence that we get, there's still an awful lot of confusion between Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, and what's going to be happening. And often, quite a bit of pushback. So it doesn't feel settled at all on that table. So, and as far as I knew, the Livonia Builders had backed down. But that might have just been, they just put on pause the process is really what ended up happening. They did not back down.
No, they did not back down. In fact, the attorney has actually taken, let's see, he's put it on his lap that the negotiators have been quiet. He's the one that's holding things up right now.
That, important clarification. I think we all don't quite know what's going on.
So they're still interested. It's still, the offer's still there. We're just waiting for an update at the next meeting.
So in knowing that, I have a question from Ms. Conneke. On a development such as what we have, we have the township owning the property. We have the need, desire of a park. We have not settled on an exact plan. The balance of the site is up for a development bid. So what is typically the process? I think, I don't want our township to mishandle this opportunity going forward. So typically, from a planning standpoint, is it better to have a definite park plan, win meeting and discussing and going further with a development on the remainder of the property? Or is it better to have it as a, you know, a simultaneous look or as far as the development goes? Can you answer that?
I can kind of think through some scenarios. So you've put out an RFP for potential developers and tentatively awarded development for a certain portion of the property. Kind of phasing and everything TBD with that. That's where things stand currently.
Right. It was in response to an RFP, correct? Ms. Chick?
And actually, the park area, the size, has not been determined yet. They made an offer. We're still negotiating with them on the size of the area. So we don't have an area. I think we can still plan what we'd like to see there if, you know, when it happens, but I don't know how deep you can get into it.
So I would say, my next question would be about, you know, any development agreement that would be put in place. Is the developer expected to complete the construction, dedicate that land as a public park? But do the development, you know, is the township just retaining ownership of that land? I would have, you know, those questions about the process. Yeah.
Yeah, the township will be keeping the park area. If we go with a developer, the developer is only doing the development on the property that he's purchasing. He would go out for bids for construction on the park portion.
Okay. So I would say, you know, that's probably not the only way you could do it, but my first thought would be, because you don't know the size of the portion of the land that's gonna be left over for the park, I think you really need to get that squared away with the developer so you know what size park you're dealing with. And then you can take those concept plans, those different park concept plans that are in the North Village Master Plan, and then go from there to actually build out your construction documents because they might need to be tweaked based on the actual size and shape of the portion of land that you end up with. So I think that that's probably the preferred order of operations.
Which, okay, can you, so let's back up a second. You're saying that size the park to the development or the other way around? To what was proposed. And I'm not trying to put you on a spot, but.
I think that the township should continue to negotiate with the developer to get the size of the park as close to the configuration as envisioned by the public planning process that you went through as possible.
Yeah, thank you. Very good. Mr. Iquinto?
Yes, sir. I believe that it is vitally important to address the size of the park first for the residents of Northfield Township. The residents have stressed the need for at least ten to twelve acres of a park and that this could be a great park to benefit the entire community. If it's any less than that, according to the Washtenaw County Parks and Rec Chairman, that the park would wind up being strictly a park for the residents that are surrounding the development. And so this is one opportunity for us to do something great, which we can't give back, for the residents of Northfield Township. And I believe it's vitally important that, I would like the township board to clarify their vision of how many acres would stay a park and then use the development plan after that. And if we develop that park first, because we have a lot of developments coming into the community and a lot of new sources of funding, then we could wind up funding the park for the development, which would in turn increase the value of that property for any developer to want. So it would increase the dollar amount per acre because now there's a great enticement for that developer to look at and say, wow, there is a development here already. It's a great park. It's a great attraction. So, thank you.
Mr. Dwyer?
I believe people were banging on the door answering our RFP, willing to come here. And I think, you know, we've got to be very careful about designing a park and telling them to work around it and expecting people to come. They're all about density. They're all about return. It needs to be something that's going to be attractive to them and works for them. So I think ultimately, we're gonna have to end up doing a partnership with them of some sort, putting a park in a position and of a size that suits both our needs. And were we to put a lot of effort into planning a park and saying, here, developers, here's a great park for you to build around, we may find out that that doesn't work for them and we've boxed ourselves in. That's been vacant for a long time. We've had this RFP going for a couple of years. And people have come to the dance and never got to the altar. And I sort of suspect that's where it's going with Livonia. And that piece of property that we're looking at will stay that way for many years to come. So I think, and the only way to do this is in some sort of partnership. And to put a whole lot of effort into planning a park and building a park even, I think would be not the wisest direction.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Ms. Infante?
While I agree with both of my fellow commissioners, I think that it's really important we take into consideration the fact that the public purchased the park with their money and they have put in a great deal of their time and energy and their hopes for what that park can be for the community. And I think we need to be extremely careful about how we use their trust.
Thank you. Anyone else? All good points. I do agree with Mr. Dwyer. Like, it's, it kind of relates back to what I was referring to about the Woodbridge site. You can't, you don't want to box development in. You make them fit somewhere that they can't or economically don't want to. So I think it's the same principle with what we're looking at on North Village. So, so the last question then, Ms. Conneke, is I'm glad, you know, we visited this a bit and gave you some of our input, where it goes from there, hopefully the right direction. But if we are to do the North, this item, North Village Park Master Plan, who is going to do it? Is it gonna be responsibility of the Planning Commission or what? Maybe you haven't gotten that far with the administration. I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I don't think we've gotten quite that far yet. You know, I think the recommendation is to begin the process of moving from that public concept vision to an actual design. I feel like generally, communities work with their administration and their Parks and Recreation Committee once a landscape architect is involved to work out the details of the concept. And then, I can't see why the Planning Commission wouldn't be involved, but usually it just gets forwarded on to the governing body to review and look at the cost estimates and say it wants to go ahead building the proposed park.
Okay. And like I said, I'm sure you haven't gotten to that point yet, but whichever way it goes, you know, Planning Commission will do what's expected of us anyway. So if you can take that with you to wherever it goes. So I don't know if you want to make any changes to number eight. Ms. Conneke, do you think the way you have it is fine from what we discussed here?
I think what I would like to perhaps add or tweak about this one is, what I'm hearing is that however this proceeds, we're recommending that the township work in partnership with a potential developer to best realize the vision for North Village, for the park portion of the North Village site in alignment with its publicly accepted plan.
Very good. So anyone else have question, comment on that? I think that would be a good alteration on that one. So we'll move on to number nine, if no one else has anything. Number nine is condemnation, demolition program. It's a, well, I have my opinion on it. Is that the condemnation part is the building officials' responsibility, and it's addressed through building codes. And the demolition portion is almost always associated with litigation or costs or long timeframes, depending on the scenario. But enforcement in this case is through the building codes. And it's not a typical blight ordinance enforcement. But, I mean, it's a great thing to look at. It's worthy of consideration. I'm not minimizing its possibilities, but that's just my comment. I mean, if that's a direction that is like to be, what they would like to take, that's fine. But that's just my opinion. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I don't know if this has anything to do with this, but it does have to do with the enforcement. I know we've been talking about putting a little more teeth in our code enforcement and so that we can actually issue tickets instead of warning letters because the warning letters can go on forever and nothing ever happens. So how would, is there any kind of work the Planning Commission would have to do to the point where we got, we're actually having our ordinance officer, giving the ordinance officer the ability to issue citations?
Yes, Ms. Chick, that was kind of related to the item number one on the Planning Commission Work Plan. That was the, what was tabled back in 2018.
Okay.
That was the text amendment introduced to the Planning Commission back then.
Oh, I need to see that again, too.
Yeah, and we'll be provided that again. But yeah, that's what that reflects.
Okay.
So anyone else on number nine? I don't have anything more than that. So just to go over this again quickly, Ms. Conneke. We have some of, I'm sure you noted the changes as we were going. So I guess I would like to, I would suggest that we see another draft version of this before we continue further. It's probably something that we could address at our next scheduled meeting and go at it that way. Does anyone else have comment or questions? Everybody agrees we should have to see another draft? I don't think I need to make a motion on that, so. Okay, very good. Ms. Chick?
We'll get another draft, and then it'll go to the board before the Planning Commission adopts it? Are we recommending adoption to the board?
Well, usually, usually what we do, we're giving them our hit, our report from last year, which is the one that we covered, and we often propose that we recommend this to the Board of Trustees, and they can change things or as they see fit, obviously. It's, as we all understand, we want to go the direction that the board wants us to on these items, but at least it's a good, a good start for their discussion. And most, the majority of it is the Planning and Building Department Work Plan. So really, the Planning Commission only has a little part in that, if anything.
I would appreciate it, Ms. Conneke, that you were at that meeting so that the board will have questions.
Absolutely. That sounds good. And I can also include a cover letter to kind of tee this up if you think that would be helpful as well for the board.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll look for that next time, Ms. Conneke. And brings us to the next item, 10B, is the approval of the 2021 Planning Commission Submission Deadlines. Ms. Conneke?
Sure, I'll just give a brief introduction to this one. So if you recall back in November when I introduced the kind of kickoff to the update of the development packet and procedures, I mentioned that one of the things the Planning Commission can do that really would help administration make sure everything moves smoothly and would also help better set up expectations for applicants as to when their items are eligible to come to Planning Commission would be to establish submission deadlines. We talked about that a little bit, and what I heard from most of the commissioners was that twenty-one days would be kind of the most acceptable timeframe. So what I propose here is a set of submission deadlines, twenty-one days prior to each Planning Commission meeting that can be posted on the city's websites along with the schedule of Planning Commission meetings. So when applicants go to get their application, they know when they gotta get their application in in order to be considered at Planning Commission. And the reason I've asked you to consider it here at your last meeting of the year is so that rather than wait until we're done finishing the development packet, is that so every applicant is treated similarly in the new year.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is we should do this one time, and then after that, it'll be addressed via the zoning, the code, right? The zoning ordinance?
We can definitely do it that way, but I would recommend that the Planning Commission, at the time it adopts its meeting schedule each year, also see the submission deadlines and adopt that all at once so that it's posted to the website that way. But it can be consistent with changes to the zoning code that establish the twenty-one day deadline. That makes sense.
It kind of does. I mean, it's just something we have to revisit. Once we get, once we establish it, I don't see that we would have to keep visiting it every year. But, I mean, we could even put it into bylaws that it's twenty-one days of the Planning Commission. Whatever we want to do, I just don't see, I don't see that we should have to revisit it and especially after we establish it. So however you want to work that. But for the time being, I'll make the motion, yeah, I'll make the motion to. But for for the time being, I'll make a motion, yeah, I'll make the motion to adopt the attached submission deadlines for 2021.
Support.
Support by Mr. Iquinto. Any questions, comments? We'll go to questions or comments, no?
Just a quick, yeah, just a quick comment. I really appreciate this. This makes everything very clear. I agree, we don't need to revisit it, but I think it's a point, they will have a schedule of it every year, though, in the, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll do roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Cusino?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Zarzaki, yes, passes, voting positive.
Thank you. And I make a motion, we approve the minutes from December 2, 2020, regular meeting and dispense with reading.
Part.
Support by Mr. Iquinto. Any questions, comments, or corrections on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 None opposed. We'll go to final call to the public. Ms. Conneke.
At this time, we'll have our last call to the public. At this time, if you wish to address the Planning Commission about any matter, you may choose to do so. Please use the raise hand function. We need to be called on. When I recognize you, please state your name and address before giving your comment. So is there anyone who wishes to give public comment at this time?
I would just like to add that I saw Mr. McNamara present, and I hope that he could make a comment if there was something specific he wanted the Planning Commission to hear or address, but I apologize if I didn't get to him regarding any previous issues. But perhaps he'd want to chime in.
Thank you, Chair. No, I didn't have anything. I was just tuning in in case there was any questions about the, you know, the updates to the site planning process. And basically, just wanted to say what I've seen so far, it looks really good, that kind of split together. So we're excited to offer that extra clarity to applicants.
The the 21 days will be helpful, right?
Yeah, that and and truly put together a sort of a checklist to help them know what they need to do, you know, the order of operations to get through the site plan process. I think that'll help as well.
Very good. If there's something we can improve in the future, Mr. McNamara, let us know.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? All right, Chair, I see no hands raised to be acknowledged.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to comments from commissioners. Mr. Iquinto.
Yes, thank you. I would like to share with everyone that the Lakeview Center is having a new development, is a family dollar store that is moving in to where the pharmacy location was, as well as next to, next door to that, to the west, which was a dollar store in the past. And they're set to be in in about 90 days. And also, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chick.
Yeah, piggybacking on Mr. Iquinto's comment, there was a lot of people excited today about that dollar store going in. So hopefully, that's the beginning of other good things coming to the area. And I also want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Mr. Cusino.
Well, second, I will triple the Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I am signing off as a Planning Commissioner. It's been, I don't know, nine or 10 year run. And I leave it in good hands, and it's been a pleasure working with all of you.
Thank you. Ms. Infante.
Brad, you always were an inspiration. Thank you. And Happy Hanukkah and Happy Christmas, everybody.
Mr. Dwyer.
I want to thank Mr. Casino for his candor and his expertise these last years. It's been a real pleasure. Merry Christmas.
Mr. Zarzaki.
I'd also like to thank Mr. Cusino for his work, and I wish everybody a happy and safe holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cusino always brought a good perspective. We appreciated his expertise, and he did a very good job. So thank you for what you've done so far, Mr. Cusino, and everyone, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
We'll miss you.
Yep. So with that, now the next meeting, next regular meeting is January 6, 2021, and make a motion to adjourn.
Part.
Part by Mr. Iquinto. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I say it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You. No, I don't.
Brad, good luck with your dad. I really appreciate you bringing up that point. I have the same situation.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Good luck. Good night, everyone.
All right, Mary. I've stopped the recording. It should be all saved for you.